Thank you, Mr. Boss. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any of you all in favor? Okay, give us some certification for executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to certify that the best of our knowledge in only public business matters lawfully and tend to promote the meeting requirements, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion to go into executive session were heard, discussed, or considered an executive session.
Mr. Secretary?
Yes.
Mr. Boss?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Okay, we'll stand for the pledges this evening. And for the... Mr. Chairman? We do not have anyone to call, but would anybody like to address the board at this time?
Well, let's bow our hearts toward prayer. Homily God, thank you heavenly Father for the opportunity to be here tonight and to exercise the freedoms that our founding fathers fought so hard and died for. And we just thank you, Lord, for this board and ask that you give them the wisdom of Solomon to do the county's business. And thank you for these students tonight, because they'll be honoring, and thank you for their accomplishments, their talents, and just ask that you bless their futures with Christ's holy name. Amen.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Strick. Okay. Got any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have one, and it will be in the information item.
Okay. Thank you. Be the approval for the agenda this evening? Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Let's take it from Mr. Boss. Thank you. All in favor? Okay. Air recognition, Dr. Hooker. Okay, I want to ask Ms. McCoy to please come up and help me. Excuse me. Mr. Boss.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Russell County School Board. Our first recognitions this evening are, we're going to begin with Lebanon High School, and we are honoring our students with their spring sports recognitions. If Mr. Long would come forward, and any coach that coached tennis, and we're going to start with Ava Deckard, if she's here. She is the daughter of Mike and Tiffany Bush. She is the Virginia High School Group 1A. Ms. Long? And when I call your name, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Thank you very much for having us tonight. Thank you for taking the time to recognize all of our student athletes for their accomplishments. Coach Moore was able to make an effort prior commitment, but Ava has been on the tennis
Josiah Wilson, parents Jason and Melanie Wilson.
team for five years, worked hard, and was able to advance to be the state runner-up
Grayson Olson, parents Richard and Tammy Olson.
in Group 1A.
Emmett Breeding, parents Preston and Crystal Breeding.
She's extremely proud of her for that accomplishment also.
And Carter Dillon, parents Brian and Prudence Dillon.
I'd be remorseful about saying that Ava was there salutatorily at Lebanon High School I can't say nothing about these young men. also, and she's going on to Southwest right now because she's on the tennis team. Congratulations, Ava. Thank you.
This is presented to Ava Deckard, Lebanon High School, by the Russell County School
You know, and I always start out as my perspective as principal of the high school. Great kids, do what they're supposed to do.
Board in recognition of selection to the 2022 VHSL Group 1A Singles Tennis Selection
If you don't know they're in the building, they're involved in the community, involved
State Runner-Up.
in clubs at school.
And please step outside in your picture when we take them by Lebanon views.
They're just a great asset to have in the building as a principal. Both of them made All-State in soccer. They've worked hard the last few years to get where they're at now.
You ain't got that much, though.
I know next year that they're going to be leaders on the soccer team. To leave is much further, but congratulations, guys.
I do.
Parents, thank you for your support, and just congratulations.
This is presented to Emmett Breeding for the recognition of selection to the 2022 VHSL Group 1A Soccer All-State Selection, Second Team Defender. Congratulations. This is presented to Carter Dillon in recognition of the selection of the 2022 VHSL Group 1A Soccer All-State Selection, Second Team at Large. Please shake the board member's hands. One shake. Thank you. Congratulations. Our next group will be our Voice Track. Derek Mitchell, parents Mark and Janet Mitchell. And Andy Lambert, parents Sunny and Misty Lambert.
And here we go, broken record. Principal, great kids, great kids, and you know, that's what it's all about. And they're a direct reflection of the parents, the way they conduct themselves around the building, or leaders, and extremely proud of them. Derek, I'm going to have to look. Derek, in the state tragedy this spring, was third place in the 3200 meters and sixth place in the 1600 meters. Congratulations. And Andy was eighth place in 100 meters. You know, you see these kids out there in the spring, running on that hard track, running around the park, lots of things of that nature, their dedication and commitment is excellent. Thank you very much. Very much.
This is presented to Derek Mitchell in recognition of the selection of the 2022 VHSL Group 1A Boys Track All-State Selection, 3200 meters, third place. And we also have Derek Mitchell in recognition of the selection, 2022 VHSL Group 1A Boys Track All-State Selection, 1600 meters, sixth place. And we got Andy Lambert here in recognition of selection to the 2022 VHSL Group 1A Boys Track All-State Selection, 100 meters, eighth place. Congratulations. Morgan Barney, parents Lynn and Melinda Barney. And Alexis Horn, parents Josh and Leanne Horn.
The last time I say this tonight, great kids. Look at them. Look at them. The affinity of student athletes, that they play, you know, recognizing for their accomplishments in softball, that they participated in all three sports. I know Lex is late, this is a senior, but Lex left us at top 10, top 10. She's off to her next step in life in college. Congratulations. We miss you. Got Morgan, see Morgan in the halls every day. And you know, I haven't looked, but no guarantees, but I guarantee she'll be top 10. But you know, a candidate of a student athlete, they're, you know, when they've gone on any game, you look at the stage when they're not playing, they're sitting there working on their homework, and that says a lot. That says a lot. Congratulations to you ladies.
I'd like to thank Dr. Hooker and the board for having us. Certainly proud of these two young ladies. They mean the world to me. It's all my pleasure. They both had great seasons for our team, helped to lead us to the state tournament. And just can't stand that Alexis is in college at ETSU. It's going to be a dentist. Of course, Morgan's back this year for her senior season. Lester Hart, they've had to put up with, been two different sports. So, but I am so extremely proud of them, and just blessed to be their coaches. It's been an honor, and just thank them.
This is presented to Morgan Barney in recognition of the selection to the 2022 VHSL Group 1A Softball All-State Selection, First Team Shortstop. And this is presented to Alexis Horn in recognition of the selection to the 2022 VHSL Group 1A Baseball All-State Selection, Second Team, Second Base.
For Dr. Herd, before I say that, my senior to Bush and his student athletes back there component, we'd like, we'd like to congratulate you on your job, guys.
Our next group of recognitions is Honecker High School. If Mr. Bush would come up. Our first recognition is for track and field girls. Elena McNulty, the daughter of Stephen and Tanya McNulty.
And Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hooker, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to recognize these student athletes, just like Mr. Wong said. I'd like to congratulate all of the Lebanon athletes that made All-State team, and several here at Honecker that we're here to recognize tonight as well. Elena was not able to be with us tonight, but I'll let Mr. Coleman talk about Elena and her accomplishment of making All-State try.
Well, thank you all for honoring these student athletes in Atlanta, in particular for track. She finished fifth in the high jump as a freshman. Wasn't able to compete the regional meet, but she'd already qualified, so shows you where she's at. She, she kind of hit a plateau. We hope she'll keep working, get a little better. And she works awful hard at all these kids. That's what they have to do to get to where they, where they are. So, we're very proud of us. Let's go check out a few more. Anything to that? Oh, thank you. I appreciate you.
Okay, our next, next recognition is Tabby Ball for Girl Softball. Parents Jeff and Deborah Ball.
And Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hooker, again, we're so excited to recognize Tabby, just like Mr. Wong has bragged on his student athletes. I'm going to say the same thing about Tabby. And we have, you know, she's just a great example of student athlete. Just seeing her smile every day when she came into school, she's graduated and going on to college, and her dad actually was one of her volunteer coaches on the softball team. He'd been doing that for several years for us, and he dedicated his time to help, to help earn softball, probably to get better in the rest of the hands. I'd like to ask if Mr. Help to marry for myself, he would.
I could go through all the stats, and she struck out 10 times in two years, and she hit over 600 two-sevenths in the rib. And I could go through all those shoes, but the best thing I can give you about Tabby is that she was a leader. It was, talk about what you needed to do, but she'd come out every day and show you what you needed to do. And it helped a lot of young girls. We had a successful season last year with a lot of young girls, and it was all a constant leadership from my student kids, and she's one of them. Fantastic person. Not just a good athlete, she's a fantastic person, and I'm just super proud of her. I tell her I love her all the time, and I know she don't believe me sometimes, but I do, and they're just like your kids. I mean, you're with them from November now, November to June, and you're with them day every day, and you just get so attached to them. I've had her since she was in eighth grade, and she's always been around me. So, I'm going to watch over her. I'm extremely proud of her, and thank you guys for acknowledging her. We really appreciate it.
This is presented to Tabby Ball in recognition of the selection to the 2021-22 VHSL Class 1 Girls All-State Softball, Second Team. Congratulations. Our next group of recognitions will be our Girl Soccer Team. Mackenzie Lowe, parents Samantha Justice. Taylor Nolly, parents Travis and April Nolly. And Julia Barton, parents Shane and Laura Barton. Will come forward?
And Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hooker, again, we'd like to thank you for recognizing these young ladies here that's with us tonight. Again, it's like Mr. Wong, he talks about his students. These young ladies, I see them every morning, and one of us do, they come into the school, smile on their face, and they go to classes, and I'm very, very proud of what they've accomplished at our school. They're not only great athletes, but they're great students as well. They set a good example for all the other students at our school. Look forward to having them this year, and you know, hopefully we can be here again next year getting an award. But I'll let our coaches tell a little bit about their All-State accomplishments.
Both of these, and Tabby, they work extremely hard. Proud of them. You know, it kind of gets into the ground, they're a part of the season, and they made it fun and enjoyable, and they were great leaders for us, and tough, and they were things that you wanted in an athlete, and I couldn't be prouder of them.
I'd like to thank their parents for all their support. You know, they do a lot for our school, and if you guys have been to any of our ballgames recently, you know Mr. Boss has always been our person that did our ballgame for us, but Shane has done outstanding jobs for us. We appreciate what he's doing. He does our football games and our volleyball games, basketball games, and he does a really good job there. I appreciate it.
Mackenzie Lowe? This is presented to Mackenzie Lowe in recognition of the selection to the 2021-22 VHSL Class 1 Girls All-State Soccer, Second Team. Kayla Nolly? Julia Barton? Presented to Julia Barton in recognition of the selection to the 2021-22 VHSL Class 1 Girls All-State Soccer, Second Team. And our last recognition is Boys Soccer. Zane Johnson, parents Wilbur and Lisa Johnson.
And Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hooker, we appreciate the opportunity to recognize Zane this evening. You know, if there's any student at our school that I think is exemplified characteristics of a great student athlete, that is Zane Johnson. And anything that he does, he gives it 110%. His character is top-notch. I don't know of anybody that I know of in the school system that I would rather represent Honecker High School than Zane as far as his leadership. He's involved in many, many different organizations, and like I say, anything that he does, he gives it 110%. And I appreciate his parents, both of them work in the school system, run some kind of schools, very dedicated employees, a lot for our school, a lot for our community, and they're great parents, appreciate what they do. And I think they've done a fine job with Zane. Zane, we're proud of him. Outstanding job, and he deserved to be recognized this evening.
I'd like to just mention, Zane also made the state track meet. He didn't play high enough for the All-State, but he was there too. So, he was pulling double duty in the spring.
And he's coach here. And had to little switch route, Doug and Will. Last year, though, Zane was participating in soccer, and we felt like it was a good thing if Coach Johnson would be out there with Zane, and he did an outstanding job with soccer team this year, and we appreciate what he did. So, we'll brag on Zane.
I don't like that word. Thank you, Dr. Hooker, members of the board. We've been fortunate the last couple of years. I think we've won about 24, 25 soccer games, played the state semi, the state quarters, back-to-back, which is really good for some. And he dedicated his time to help, to help earn softball progress, get better as a student. And I'd like to ask if you'd help him here for myself, you know.
I could, I could go through all the stats and she struck out 10 times in two years. And she hit over 600 two seasons in the road. And I could go through all those views, but the best thing I can give you about Tabby is probably being a person. She is a leader. It was, talk about what you needed to do, but she'd come out every day and show you what you needed to do. And it helped a lot of young girls. We had a successful season last year with a lot of young girls. And it was all a contribution for my student kids. And she's one of them. Fantastic person. Not just a good athlete, she's a fantastic person. And I'm just super proud of her. I tell her I love her all the time. I know she don't believe me sometimes, but, but I do. And they're just like your kids. I mean, you're with them from November now, November to June, and you're with them day every day. And you just get so attached to them. I've had her since she was in eighth grade. And she's always been around me. It's like a much of. I'm extremely proud of her and thank you guys for acknowledging her. We really appreciate it.
This is presented to Tabby Ball in recognition of the selection to the 2021-22 VHSL Class 1 Girls All-State Softball Second Team. Congratulations. Our next group of recognitions will be our Girl Soccer Team. Mackenzie Lowe, parents Samantha Justice. Taylor Nolly, parents Travis and April Nolly. And Julia Barton, parents Shane and Laura Barton.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hooker, again, we'd like to thank you for recognizing these young ladies here that's with us tonight. Again, just like Mr. Wong talked about his students, these young ladies I see them every morning. I'm a blessed dude. They come into the school, smile on their face. And they go to classes and I'm very, very proud of what they've accomplished at our school. They're not only great athletes, but they're great students as well. They set a good example for all the other students at our school. Look forward to having them this year and, you know, hopefully we can be here again next year getting an award. But I'll let their coaches tell a little bit about their Allstate accomplishments.
Both of these, Antella, they work extremely hard. I'm proud of them. You know, it kind of gets into the grind. They're up to the season and they made fun and enjoyable. And they were great leaders for us and tough. They were things that you wanted in an athlete. And I couldn't be prouder of.
I'd love to thank their parents for all their support. Now, they do a lot for our school and if you've been to any of our ballgames recently. You know, Mr. Postick has always been our person that did our football games for us. But Shane has an outstanding job for us. We appreciate what he does. He does our football games and our volleyball games, basketball games. And he does a really good job. We appreciate him.
Mackenzie Lowe. This is presented to Mackenzie Lowe in recognition of the selection to the 2021-22 VHSL Class 1 Girls All-State Soccer Second Team. Helen Nolly. Julia Barton. Presented to Julia Barton in recognition of the selection to the 2021-22 VHSL Class 1 Girls All-State Soccer Second Team. And our last recognition is Boys Soccer, Zane Johnson, parents Wilbur and Lisa Johnson.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hooker, we appreciate the opportunity to recognize Zane this evening. You know, if there's any student at our school that I think is exemplifies characteristics of a great student athlete, that is Zane Johnson. And anything that he does, he gives it 110%. His character is top-notch. I don't know of anybody that, that I know of in the school system that I would rather represent Hunnaker High School than Zane. As far as his leadership, he's involved in many, many different organizations. And like I say, anything that he does, he gives it 110%. And I appreciate his parents, both of them working in the school system, Russell County Public Schools. Very dedicated employees, a lot for our school, do a lot for our community. And they're great parents. Appreciate what they do. And I think they've done a fine job with Zane. Zane, we're proud of him. Done an outstanding job. He deserved to be recognized this evening.
I'd like to just mention, Zane also made the state track meet. He didn't play high enough to be Allstate, but he was there too. So, he was pulling double duty in the spring.
And he's a coach here. And we had a little switcheroo with Doug and Will last year, though Zane was participating in soccer. And we felt like it was a good thing if Coach Johnson would be out there with Zane. He did an outstanding job with soccer team this year. We appreciate what he did. So, you want to brag on Zane?
Well, I don't like that word. Thank you, Dr. Hooker, members of the board. We've been fortunate the last couple of years. I think we've won about 24, 25 soccer games, played the state semi, state quarters, back-to-back. Which is really good for small schools in southwest Virginia. Zane, we didn't have Allstate when he was a sophomore. Still, I think he accounted for 40 goals with his assists and everything. This past year, he was over 41 or 42 goals with goals and assists. So, total counting and he's pushing, getting close to 100 total with assists and everything. Works tirelessly. I will say this, even if he is my son, I've met very few people that work like he does. So, very, very proud of him and thank you guys.
This is presented to Zane Johnson in recognition of selection to the 2021-22 VHSL Class 1 Boys All-State Soccer Second Team.
It's amazing how fast time goes by. Like you said, it seemed like yesterday, but it's there. Zane's doing good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush. Thank you, Doctor.
Dr. Hooker apologized, Ms. Fruit, for what everybody, she, she says I'm going to miss her, so we need to go back to her present. So, as the board had a chance to look at your minutes and add a motion that we approve her minutes from the previous meeting.
I would like the motion, Madam Chair, to approve the minutes as presented in our agenda.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're down to the bills and the accounts. Board had an opportunity. Okay, thank you, Mr. Postick. Do we have a second?
I'll second you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zachoea. All in favor of paying the bills?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our resignations and retirements.
Madam Chair, we do have a short list of resignations and retirements.
We have a motion that we approve. Thank you, Mr. Postick. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new personnel and transfers.
Yes, we also have another short list of new hires and transfers.
And do we have a motion that we approve the new hires?
It's on me.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker.
Madam Chair, we do have two action items. The first one is the request of approval of the Bible Release Time Program. This is for Kelly Ferguson. She's a representative of the Elgin Children's Foundation. And this is just to expand the Bible Release Time Programs at Castlewood, Belfast, and Lebanon Elementary Schools.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Uh huh.
Thank you, Mr. Postick. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker.
Okay, the second action item is the request approval of items as surplus for the auction scheduled for Saturday, October the 1st, 2022, at 9:00 at the Bus Garage.
Okay, we got a motion? Thank you, Mr. Postick. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Garrett. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, Dr. Hooker.
We do have one information item that we did receive around 4:30 this afternoon. And we are pleased to announce that we have been awarded the 21st Century Learning Grant for Belfast Elementary, Castlewood Elementary, Hunnaker Elementary, Lebanon Middle School, Source Creek Elementary, Copper Creek Elementary, and Lebanon Elementary.
That's great. Dr. Hooker.
How much money are you looking at?
Hmm, it's gonna be $800,000 a year for three years.
I'd like to thank this board for all the work she's.
Absolutely.
It is.
Yes. Or Miss Law, vote.
We thank all of you and thanks to Georgia the other day. She told me, you know, this, this gives a hot meal for those students that stand for those after-school programs. So, we thank you, Ms. McCoy, because that, that helps a lot of our students. Children with her evening meal as well. You may also want to mention, Dr. Hooker, you shared with the board our ranking.
Yes, I was like, I was gonna wait till the end, but I'll go ahead. No, that's okay. I can go ahead and do that. It's another bragging moment for Russell County Public Schools is that our school division profiles came out and we ranked 22nd in the state. And then we were actually in the top 10 in the SOL poverty level, which was fantastic. Super proud of our teachers and students, administrators, everybody involved.
Yes, and even with these difficult times, you know, that they're good. To think that they're learning, that's wonderful. So, thank you for that. Okay, our sales tax, or? It's 436-295-94, is that correct?
Uh huh.
For the August. The board had an opportunity to look at the maintenance and the future reports. Have any questions? Future agenda items?
Do we do this?
Do I, Dr. Hooker?
There's no future agenda items.
Or if anything they want to? For the future. Okay, our next board meeting will be October the 6th. It'll be a Thursday. Would 4 o'clock work for the board or would that be an inconvenience? 8:00, 4:00, and 7:00?
About 8:00.
Okay.
Get the baby off.
That's pushing it for me, too.
Okay, we'll, we'll leave it like it is then.
Get the boy off the bus at 4:00. All right, we're outside for me.
Sure. Okay. That checks here, that, and future calendar items?
Yes, ma'am. We have the auction that will be held on October the 1st, 2022, at the Bus Garage at 9:00 a.m. And then also Russell County Career Technology Center Advisory Dinner has been scheduled for October the 27th at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion that we?
Do we have a motion, Chair?
And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, and we'd like to thank Lebanon Elementary for being able to see. And I would also give a time of remembrance to Dr. Hooker with the loss of her mother. And also, we would like to remember Elliot Sample. He was a former principal and school board member and member of our community. Mike Puckett, he's a former principal and superintendent of Russell County Schools, so.
And also supervisor.
And supervisor as well, so we remember those families this evening. I'm sure they will be missed, but that's something that will come to all of us at some point in time. Okay, thank you everyone for coming and appreciate you and your presence.